We do have a hearing that has to start at 5:01 time certain, so bring us together a few minutes early to have our call to order, and we are called to order. Welcome to all of you. It's nice to see a large gathering with us tonight, and we're happy to have all of you with us, whether you're here in the audience with us tonight or watching through one of the multiple other electronic abilities. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on my nation, on my God, and the visible liberty and justice for all.
And the treasure hunter pledge?
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you. You may be seated. Let the time reflect that it is 5:01, and we will now open our public hearing. Michelle Thomas, if you would come forward and provide us a brief overview of the proposed final millage rates and final budget for 2425.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. This is the final budget hearing. The tentative budget hearing was held on July 30th, 2024. The information regarding millage rates is exactly identical to what was presented on July 30th with a slight change in budget, so we will go through this fairly quickly while I still cover the required elements. At the end of the presentation, we will vote to approve final millage rates. After final millage rates are approved, we will vote to approve the final budget and resolutions, all three resolutions at one time. This shows the taxable value, millage, and tax collection estimates at 100% and 96%. We budget at 96%, and last year we collected 96.5%. As a reminder, the board must levy the 3.0000 required local effort millage and the 1.0000 voted operating millage. The 0.7480 discretionary millage and the 1.5000 capital operating millage are maximums. The only action the board could take would be to reduce those, and I do not recommend that. The total millage is 6.2480. The board does not have the authority to increase the millages; they are set by the legislature and is our maximum millage for the 2425 school year. This shows a history of the millage rates going back to fiscal year 2007/8. During this time, our highest millage rate was during fiscal year 10/11 at 8.1770. This shows the break between the operating capital and voted millages and where the legislature demanded a shift. Capital outlay shifted from 2 mills in 7/8 to 1 1/2 mills in 9/10. Since fiscal year 1920, the district has levied an additional 1 mill as voted operating This shows the average impact to the annual taxes of homeowners in the county. We get this information from the property appraiser's office each year. There is a reduction in the nonvoted millage by 3.03%, but the average taxable value in the county increased by approximately 10.2%. Therefore, the average homeowner experiences an increase in annual taxes by approximately This shows the taxable value history. The entire county's gross taxable value makes up the taxes that you will see on the next slide. This shows the gross tax collection history and excludes the voted 1 mill. I will show the impact of the 1 mill on the next slide. Here you can see the impact that the additional voted 1 mill will have on our collections for 2425, resulting in $45 million of additional revenue. This will be the sixth year recognizing revenue from the 1 mill as it was renewed in November 2022 for an additional four years as by law. The additional revenue generated from this 1 mill is used to recruit and retain qualified teachers, improve school security, improve mental health services, and fund other essential operations that preserve important school programs. As required by law, the 1 mill is proportionately shared with charter schools. It is important to note that the tax collections and taxable values are not increasing at the same rate. From '23 to '24 to '24/25, the taxable value increases 10.69%, but the collections increase 7.28%. And that is because of the legislature mandates what the required local effort is, and they've capped all of our other millage rates. Looking back at '78, we were collecting $185 million. For consistent comparison purposes, we will exclude the additional voted 1 mill on this slide. We would be proposed to collect $235.6 million this year, so we are up 50.9 million compared to that benchmark year, and cumulatively $400.5 million in reduced tax burden to the property owners in the county. Incorporating the voted 1 mill, we are proposed to collect $280.5 million and over by $95.8 million compared to that benchmark year, but still down cumulatively $204.4 million in reduced tax burden to the property owners of the county. The rollback rate discussion is something we are required to talk about, and here is a table that helps to explain it. In '23/24, the taxable value was $42.2 billion; the millage rate was 6.4120. That millage rate generated $271 million. The rollback rate is a calculated rate that will generate the same exact revenue using this year's net taxable value. The calculated rollback rate is 6.0191, so 6.0191 times the current taxable value of $45 billion generates $271 million. Since we have a proposed rate of 6.2480, which exceeds 6.0191, we have to compare those two millage rates and make a public statement that the proposed rate is 3.8% greater than the rollback rate. And here's a summary of the budget. This includes beginning reserves, revenues appropriations, and ending reserves for a grand total of $1,201,866,980.72, which is amended throughout the hereby official And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. At this point, if there are any in the audience that wish to address the items 2.1 through 2.7 that was presented by Ms. Thomas, now would be the time for you to come forward. Okay, seeing none. Board members, we have all of this before us. Mr. Superintendent, would you walk us through the motions for each item, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend the board approve the final required local effort millage of 3.0 mills as specified in the resolution 2024-25, TRIM-A.
Board members, do we have a motion and a second? A motion, second. Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
I recommend the board approve the final district school tax discretionary operating millage of 0.7480 mills as specified in the resolution 2024-25, TRIM-A.
Board members, do we have a motion?
No move.
Okay. Any conversation? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
I recommend the board approve the final district discretionary local capital improvement millage of 1.5 mills as specified in the resolution 2024-25, TRIM-A.
Motion?
No move.
Motion and a second on the floor. Any conversation? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
I recommend the board approve the final district additional voted millage of 1.0 mills as specified in the resolution 2024-25, TRIM-A.
Do we have a motion?
No move.
Motion and a second on the floor. Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
I recommend the board adopt the 2024-25 final budget in the amount of $1,184,653,178.
Board members, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Any conversation? All in favor?
We have a correction.
Yes.
What is indicated on my cheat sheet is incorrect, so...
We will...this is for item 2.6. Would you like to make another...
Correct. I'd like an amended...it should be, and this is a mouthful, $1,201,866,980.72. I apologize, Madam Chair.
No worries. We were...had the correct amount in front of us, so...all right. Do I have...do the motion and second still stand with the corrected? No.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any conversation? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Lastly, I recommend the board adopt resolution 2024-25, TRIM-B, and resolution 2024-25, TRIM-C, as submitted.
Hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. That concludes our public hearing for the evening, and we will now move to our special orders of business. Mr. Superintendent?
I would like to introduce our Chief of Communications, Ms. Lydia Martin, with our special recognitions, and I'd ask the board to please exit stage right and take our place at the front, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Dr. Prince, Board members. At this time, I would like to recognize a business that we have enjoyed an incredible partnership with: Big Apple Pizza Fort Pierce and Scott Van Duser, as well as Big Apple Pizza Port St. Lucy Bayshore and Carmine Lombardi. Big Apple Pizza is being recognized as one of just three businesses from across the state of Florida named the Commissioners Business Recognition Business for the Year. Big Apple Pizza was nominated for their year-long Read to Succeed initiative, where schools earned money for their schools from Big Apple Pizza nights, and at these events, students received free books to build their own classroom...their own libraries at home. At the end of the year, the school with the most participation, which was Fairlawn Elementary, received a school-wide party and $10,000. The program is continuing this year, and we look forward to announce the details in the coming weeks. So if I could have the representatives from Big Apple Pizza, Scott Van Duser, come forward, please, and I know we have some special guests here who also helped out. We have Bookman, if you want to come forward, Bookman, and we also have our partner with Sean Boyle and the Children's Services Council, and would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
All right?
Thank you. First, I want to go back to the beginning with Dr. Prince, Dr. Wilde, and Mrs. Martin. We had an idea like a little over a year ago, and we had no idea what we were doing, but we wanted to give back to the community in the worst way, and we came up with this plan in less than a week, and I want to thank your leadership, because I can only tell you, when someone comes to me with an idea, another idea, it's like, okay, and I put the paper somewhere, but I can tell you, every one of your schools welcomed the idea and participated. We handed out over 3,100 slices of pizza, over 8,500 books went into their homes, and over $26,000 went to the schools to help the kids. So if it's any indication of your leadership, I can only tell you, your schools are in good hands, and thank you guys for welcoming us, and it was an incredible, incredible program, and we look forward to this year as well.
Thank you. Every September, the Chorus Stickney Harper Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution celebrate the week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Chapter Treasurer Donna Neidick, along with Linda Gallup, the chapter's regent, and Dr. Lorraine Hillard, the recording secretary, will read a proclamation designating this week as Constitution Week and request that the board adopt the same. So if you would please come forward.
Prince, Madam Chairperson, and the members of St. Lucie County School Board, as Lydia said, my name is Donna Neidick. I'm here with Linda Gallup and Dr. Lorraine Hillard, and we would like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you to proclaim Constitution Week, September 17 through 23rd. The aims of Constitution Week are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending our Constitution, to inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the very foundation of our life, to encourage the study of the historical events which led to the framing of our Constitution. And the members of the Chorus Stickney Harper Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution will be at the Fort Pierce Farmers Market on Saturday, September 14th, where we will be handing out Constitution booklets in celebration of Constitution Week and encouraging people to learn more about this amazing document that has guided our country for so many years. We also have Constitution displays at the libraries, Kilmer, Hurston, and Lakewood Park, and we encourage everyone to visit them and learn again more about the Constitution. The School Board of the St. Lucie County Proclamation designating September 17 through 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week, whereas Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document and is celebrated annually during the week of September 17 through 23rd, and whereas September 17, 2024, is the actual 237th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America. Whereas the Constitution ensures the rights of every American and provides framework for the administration of our country, yet few know this state or celebrate its importance in any fashion.
Whereas the United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights, and whereas the celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution, which petitioned Congress in 1955 to set aside September 17 through the 23rd annually to be dedicated to the observance of Constitution Week. Said resolution being later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Now, therefore be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucie County does hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week in St. Lucie Public Schools, and encourages all citizens to observe this important day in nation's history through activities of learning and local events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend the board proclaim September 17 through 23rd as Constitution.
So...
Second.
Thank you.
Second, third, and fourth.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. (applause)
Thank you very much. The Comcast Internet Essentials Partnership Program is a collaborative effort between the St. Lucie Public Schools, St. Lucie Education Foundation, and the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners to provide free and reduced internet services to all Title I public schools, families, and students in St. Lucie County. This initiative addresses the digital divide, ensuring that students from low-income families have reliable internet access to support their educational needs. In addition, the St. Lucie Education Foundation, represented tonight by Vice Chair James Taylor, will acknowledge a donation of six laptops from Comcast, who will be represented by Rachel Bon-Larin, to be given to selected families, one student who is here tonight.
Thank you, Lydia. Good evening, Chair Holly and members of the board, Superintendent Prince. As Vice Chair of the Education Foundation, I'm honored to speak tonight about the impactful partnership we've built with St. Lucie Public Schools, the St. Lucie Board of County Commissioners, and Comcast. Together, we've made significant strides in addressing the digital divide, a crucial issue that affects so many of our students and families. For over a year, we've worked diligently to offer free or low-cost internet access to St. Lucie students, and I'm proud to share that to date, we've successfully signed up over 800 families. This initiative goes beyond providing connectivity. It opens doors to critical resources empowering students to succeed both in the classroom and in their personal life. As part of this effort, Comcast has generously donated laptops to students in need, and tonight we're excited to recognize two deserving students that recently received a laptop: Charles White, an 11th grade student at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, and Noel Mackenlove, a 1st grade student at Lawnwood Elementary. While Noel's family couldn't be here in person tonight, we're honored to have Rebecca Benton, our Life Skills Parent Educator, here representing them. We'd like to invite Charles's family and Rebecca to join me at the front for a photo at the end of this presentation. I'd like now to welcome Rachel Bon-Larin, Director of Government and Regulatory Affairs from Comcast, to share a few words about this remarkable partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, James. I first and foremost just want to say thank you. This partnership has been instrumental. It is a pleasure to work for a company that is truly committed to giving back to the community. We have an initiative called Project UP. It is a 10...it is a billion-dollar investment in our communities to help minimize the digital divide over the course of 10 years, and this is just one way that we're able to give back through the laptop giveaways, if you will. I also want to say thank you for this Internet Essentials Partnership Program, partnership that we have with the school district, the Education Foundation, thanks to the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners. It is a program that is now being replicated across the country, and I say that because the $30 credit that is now being added to accounts as opposed to just going in and doing the Internet Essentials Plus. So I say that because this board allowed this opportunity to be given back to those members and with these wonderful students. So thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing this partnership.
If there's any other Foundation Board members, come join us up here.
Thank you very much. And we have one star recipient for this evening. Jennifer Ford, who is a human resource generalist, was nominated by Jennifer D. Donato from Child Nutrition Services. And in the nomination, Jennifer stated, "We are pleased to nominate Jennifer Ford as a star recipient. She has made this hiring season a breeze in comparison to years past. Her communication level was exceptional, and the timeliness of processing new employees was very efficient. Not only does she project charm, warmth, and a cheerful attitude to our new hires, but to her internal customers as well. Thank you for always exceeding our expectations. Okay, congratulations and thank you, and that concludes our special orders of business for this evening.
Mr. Freeland, thank you for being here tonight. Welcome to the podium. He's here to deliver the ESOL report.
Good evening, Chairwoman Holly, board members, Superintendent Prince. I just have two things I want to speak to this evening. The first is the raises that we negotiated and that both the district and union teams worked very hard to get prior to the start of the school year. Those are starting to roll out, and I want to thank payroll and everybody involved with getting those out quickly. It's certainly appreciated, and they always take very good care of our members. I do want to mention the CTA raises, because there's some confusion amongst our members. Because they're based on performance, on pay-for-performance, at least the bulk of those can't be paid until evaluations are finalized, which is coming, but it's not here yet. The confusion comes because for several years, we managed to pay out the increases prior to getting those. That's because we had contract language that allowed us to be able to calculate sort of the lowest score on the IMS, on the observational portion, and base it on that. We're not allowed to do that. Language doesn't exist in our contracts, and the state kind of frowns on that, so we have to wait for those to come in, but any delays, not because payroll and the board and those people aren't working very quickly for us, and I'm sure those will be coming out quickly as soon as those evaluations are finalized. But I just wanted to mention that because I don't know...I don't know if you get the calls, but we certainly get the calls about why aren't ours coming yet, why isn't like in years past. So I did want to just mention because things have changed since years past. Second thing I want to talk about real quickly is, last time I was here, I mentioned that we had, I guess, an ongoing disagreement. It was really in the informal stages about dress codes and some of the things in the handbooks, and collaboration has come through for us again. I think we've come to a resolution that's beneficial to both the district and the union and our members. It'll bring clarity to handbooks and the situation, which is welcome. It's going to help everybody know where they stand, what they have to do, those kinds of things. So again, that was a lot of work. The district's team met with us several times, and we managed to work through that, and I'm pleased that we've gotten to a tentative, really just a matter of finalizing a few things, resolution to that, and I think it's turned out very well. And so again, I just want to mention how the...even when there's some friction, the collaborat- collaborative process really works very well to resolve differences that in other counties would have devolved into potentially something a lot uglier than we have here. I'll just leave it at that. So, those are really the only two things I want to mention for this evening. I think things are going well for the start of the year, which I always am hesitant to talk about because I don't want to jinx anything, but really, by and large, the reports that we've gotten from schools, from members, even principals who have called us, have been very positive. So I'm just always happy to be able to come here and just report positive news, and so I think that's very positive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. We like the positive news as well. Move to our CWA report. You just had time to sit down. No report. Well, it's nice to see you this evening. And tonight, it is my honor to introduce Alexa Morgan to the podium as the chairperson of the Youth Advisory Council for the 2425 school year. Welcome, Alexa.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Holly, the board. Thank you all for having me. My name is Alexia Morgan, and I'm this year's Youth Advisory Council Chairperson. I'm truly grateful and honored to have the opportunity to work with the Youth Advisory Council this year. It's an incredible privilege to represent such a dedicated group of students, and I look forward to the positive impact we'll make together this year. I would like to take the time to present a brief report on our August Youth Advisory Council meeting. We started the meeting at 3:34 PM. I called the meeting to order and led the Pledge of Allegiance. Following that, I introduced our Recording Secretary for this year, Emily Neesh, and I shared some opening remarks outlining our goals for the year ahead. The council was very receptive, and we set the tone for what I believe will be a productive and collaborative school year. First, we reviewed the Robert's Rules of Order with Ms. Debbie Holly, who reminded us that all of our meetings will follow these procedures. Attendance and participation will be essential and mandatory in maintaining an organized and efficient council. Next, each school presented their reports, highlighting important issues such as homecoming preparations, the implementation of ID scans to monitor student movements, tardy policies, and concerns about academic diversity in programs. Several schools also reported technology-related challenges such as laptop inaccessibility and Wi-Fi issues, which are hindering students' ability to complete their work effectively. We also formed the Communications Outreach Committee. This committee will be responsible for managing public outreach and social media for the council, as well as coordinating communications through our district's official platforms. Members volunteered to help shape this initiative. We then discussed the process for selecting a vice chairperson. Several members expressed interest, and the selection process will be completed via email this week. All communications will follow Sunshine Law requirements to ensure transparency. Additionally, we decided that meetings will be held monthly throughout the school year. The council unanimously agreed on the frequency of the meetings, ensuring consistent communication and engagement among members. Finally, during open discussion, we addressed technology concerns that many schools are experiencing, particularly regarding laptops and Wi-Fi connectivity. Ms. Holly will be inviting IT personnel to our next meeting to help address these issues. We also discussed the new cellphone policy, and while most schools are adapting well, there is some variation in how it's being enforced. We adjourned the meeting at 4:42 PM after a productive session. Once again, I'm very honored to work with such a bright group, and I'm confident that we will accomplish great things this year. Thank you all.
Thank you, Alexa.
And Alexa, I hate to put your mom on the spot, but welcome. We're glad you're here with us tonight to share an Alexa's moment. Good to have you. All right, board members, we will move to our consent agenda. To adopt the consent agenda as presented, do I have a motion for adoption? A motion and a second. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adoption carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, can we have your recommendation, please?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda submitted.
Before we act on your recommendation, board members, are there any items from the consent agenda that you wish to have removed for special discussion or vote?
Go ahead, Dr. Mills.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull 14.1, the lease agreement without before former Garden City Early Learning Academy, for separate discussion and vote.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ingersoll?
10.3.
10.3.
RFQ 24-16.
Separate discussion or separate discussion and vote?
Let's pull it all together and just see how it goes.
All right, board members, we have before us consent agenda items 9.1 through 21.3. Items 10.3 has been pulled by school board member Mr. Ingersoll. Item number 14.1 has been pulled by school board member Dr. Mills. So this recommendation, this vote, will be on all consent agenda items 9.1 through 21.3 with the exclusion of 10.3 and 14.1.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Ingersoll. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Before we move into further, one of the items that was pulled, number 10.3, we do have a scheduled speaker that would like to address that component. So at this time, at the board's approval, I would like to call Mr. Mike Jakwin forward to speak on item number 10.3. Mr. Jakwin, welcome to the podium. You can hand it to the superintendent. Those things are supposed to come to us ahead of time, but you can give them to the superintendent, and he can disperse them later.
It's going to make it a lot more interesting what I have to say. There's a couple of pictures in there.
Welcome to the podium, and if you just, before you get started, state your name, please, for us.
Yep, Michael Jakwin, Jakwin &amp; Sons Construction. It's been about two months that I've been working on trying to come and have a conversation, and I'm appreciative that you're allowing me to do that today. We've had meetings scheduled, and they were canceled for a variety of reasons, but I know Dr. Prince wants to follow the rules and regulations, so do I, and that's why I've not addressed anybody or talked to anybody, nor has he or anybody else, so we're buying by all the rules. So, tonight, this K8, what we're here for is to select the most highly qualified firm, and by that is the most points. A couple of things I'd like to point out. From a timeline perspective, September 28, 2023.
Hold on a second.
Is it going?
Sorry, Mike.
Okay.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
I can just, okay. Sorry, Mr. Jakwin.
It's okay. So anyhow, now, there's a couple of key points. There's some dates. So roughly over a year ago, we have a teaming agreement with the Morgani Group. So it's a legal binding document where we're teaming, similar to what was done on the high schools and the like. June 5 of this year, an RFQ came out for the Western Grows K8. On July 8, we submitted and confirmed that our submittal was done on time. On July 10, I talked with staff, and one of the reasons I called to talk to the one staff member you're allowed to talk to was to ask them if they had any question or understanding or needing clarity to the business structure. Okay? So it's an important thing. This was the day before any scoring was done, so I was wanting to make sure that there wasn't any question about it. The answer I got was, no, they didn't need any clarification, but if they did, they would have had sent a question. So they didn't have any questions, but if they did, they could have asked a question at that point. So there's an unanswered question on the table, and that's the main reason why I'm here today. In the RFQ, just so that you guys understand the matrix of how it's put together, you basically have a written score. You have a part that staff does, and you have a part that the committee does, okay? Just on the written component. And what I really want to focus in on tonight is what staff graded, which should be an objective way of determining this. So anyhow, the one area, and again, I apologize, I know that you needed that prior to night or I would have done that, but anyhow, the scoring, there's, right now, we, our team is in second place by .44, so less than 1%. And one of the areas with this business structure that I'm talking about, there was two points that I felt were not considered in the evaluation, okay? So I'll skip through a little bit, apologize. Now, there was an email that I did specifically ask this post everything being done, and I got an email back, and they only refer to Section G. But where the question is, is in Addendum II, which is in Section B. I know I'm getting lost in the weeds, and it's a math thing, and it's whatever. I'm going to, so, but the point being is that there's still a question on the table that has not been answered, okay? So now, in our submittal, we outlined specifically that we did not have this item in Section B. It was done by the other company. So there's monies that got distributed inappropriately, and there is definitely a question on the table. So that's the reason that, one of the reasons I'm here tonight. We do have, it's public record now, so we do have all the submittals, we have the presentations and the like, and another firm did it slightly different, okay? I know I'm running short on time. The other thing, too, is the company claims to be local, so there's another part of this written that's done. This company claims to be local. They have a business tax receipt. That's the only grading criteria for that. We actually looked on their website. We actually went to where the address was. Their website doesn't show it as a business, and we went to where they actually say their business is, and the door is papered over and says, "Use other door." So we're inquisitive, so we go in the other door and say, "Hey, is this particular construction company, you know, running a business out of here?" Their answer was, "Who's that business?" So it's kind of like, okay. Then if you look further into their documents, in their submittal, they have in the business structure, they're claiming Palm Beach, which is not what we consider local as where they're doing it. And then all their staff members are out of this area, and they even say it in their book. So the only thing they've got going for them is this business tax receipt, but they don't operate a business or considering themselves local. The last point, too, if you looked at just the committee scoring, we actually ranked the highest in committee scoring, minus what the written score was done by staff. So we actually are the top-rated firm when it comes to that. There's a state statute, and you probably defer to the attorney, it's 287, or .09451. And it's also listed somewhere else, but anyhow, in this, it says, "Provided such distribution does not violate the principle in selecting the most highly qualified firm." If the most highly qualified firm is the one with the most points, and there's ambiguity in what I'm considering or what I perceive potentially as local, and specifically the unanswered question, I'm just asking that you take a look at that, maybe put it back to staff, allow that adjustment to be made, and then come back before you, or simply just look at the statute, and the statute says you could disallow. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is both of the high schools were done without this written component. So this written component that was done for this was not done on those. So I'm just saying it's the first time that it was done, so there's definitely some questions on the table. That's, again, I appreciate the thought.
Thank you, Mr. Jakwin. You know, I feel compelled to make a couple of comments, if I may, with regards to Mr. Jakwin's comments.
You're recognized by the chair.
So let's go back to 2022 in November, when we went through this RFQ process. We had Mr. Jakwin came and spoke to the board and talked about volume of work and how that was not a no-longer component. So we actually, if you recall, we went through the process with the board, where we went through step-by-step with the board how we follow our process, what that process is, and then we took input from the board. There were two components that the board asked us to include, and that was to put volume of work back in to the process, and also give points for minority business ownership as well. Now, when the letter of intent goes out, and I also want to mention, Mr. Jakwin did ask to have a meeting with me, but if I met with him, it'd be a violation of our policy and the law, and we're in our cone of silence until tonight, so I declined that meeting. I also remind board members, recommended board members also not discuss this because they were part of the cone of silence. Mr. Jakwin's calculations, I want to make a couple of points. Number one, I'm sure every business would like to make their own calculation so that it suits their purpose. I respect our committee. I even changed substantially the committee that went through this process from the last time that we went through this process. And also, he indicates that the Wharton Smith who we're recommending be awarded the bid is not a local business owner, but they've had a, Martin Tax Collector's Office has a record of Wharton Smith being on the tax roll since November 9, 2001. So that isn't exactly accurate. I also want to remind everybody that whenever they're given the letter of intent, they're given 72 hours to file a formal protest. No formal protest was filed. And also, Mr. Jakwin has a majority partner, Morgani. No formal protest was filed by Morgani either. So I just want to let you know that those are the facts, and I stand by my recommendation, and I trust our senior staff through the process because they do take this very seriously, and they work diligently to make sure they get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Ingersoll, you're the one that pulled this for separate discussion and vote. Do you have any comments?
Number one, I didn't, wasn't able to talk to Mr. Jakwin ahead of time, because obviously there's a cone of silence. And I find it disarming that you have an enormous business decision to make, and you don't have the opportunity to hear any questions or answer any questions in advance. So when this issue comes to avail, we're hearing it just like you're hearing it, and there's no opportunity to say, "Hey, well, let's go back and look at it, let's check everything, if he has other concerns, let's look at that." I find that the process might have been good, which I have total faith in our staff, but the policy that's at hand stinks. We, when this got announced last Tuesday, opened up to the public, the cone of silence should end. Now, the state statute says it's after the notice. This is our own policy. This is one that St. Lucie County has, and I feel, unfortunately now, it needs, we need to workshop this and change this policy. I might be the only board member that feels this way, but as a local businessman that supports our community and supports our school district, we should have the opportunity to meet with them as soon as all, everything goes local, as soon as everything goes public. That's why it's called a public meeting, so we can discuss it and be able to come with informed decisions rather than, in order, than just hearing this right now. I don't think it's fair to the school district, I don't think it's fair to the community, and I don't think it's fair to the business partners. And I'm not saying how we should change it, I'm just saying that that policy needs to be looked at. It could be a curriculum policy where there's a cone of silence. I know, Ms. Holly, me and you were here for curriculum, and, you know, if that policy wasn't in place, we wouldn't be able to hear them until they came here, but instead, I know that I met with the math people ahead of time. It's easier to work out situations, to hear where they're coming from, to make an informed decision before they come to a board meeting and have that final say. That's just the way I feel.
Mr. Ingersoll, correct me if I'm paraphrasing wrong, but what you're bringing forth tonight really is not about the consent agenda item number 10.3, but rather the policy that's connected to that. And so I hear you asking for an opportunity for the policy to be revisited.
The answer is yes, and the reason why I pulled that as a separate vote is because I wasn't sure what Mr. Jakwin was going to say. Because if not, then there's no sense in having Mr. Jakwin come up and say it if our mind was already made. I mean, because that process means that all five of us have already decided before he got up here to share his concerns. In fact, I've got this sitting right here, and he says, "I wasn't sure if I could turn it in or not," because he doesn't know if that it in or not," because he doesn't know if that violates the cone of silence or not.
And according to our policy, which I will read into the record now for all, the cone of silence terminates at the time the board acts on a written recommendation from the purchasing department regarding contract award, which means action is the vote that we will take tonight. That is the, how the board acts. So the cone of silence does not terminate until the vote has been taken tonight. Am I interpreting that right, Mr. Attorney?
You are.
Okay, thank you. And that's the policy as it stands now.
That's the policy as it stands at hand, but I've had a lot of discussion with Mr. Cole, and Mr. Cole, maybe I'm wrong, but the state of Florida says that the cone of silence can be broken, not broken, is terminated once the notice of intent has gone out.
That is true for state agencies, but the school board can set its own policies, and so that's what you've done.
According to the state statute.
Yeah, so, yeah, so in your case, you're governed by your own policy, and so that's, yes, that is something the board can decide. You know, the reason for the cone of silence, it's designed to protect the integrity of the process, and the idea being that if you open the door to people who are involved in the bid process, and remember, the cone of silence only applies to people involved in the bid process, either potentially before the bid starts, or they're actual bidders in the process. Other members of the public can reach out to you at any time, they're not covered by the cone of silence. But the idea being that there's no undue influence on the process, and then if there is a concern about the process, then the bid protest process goes into place. 72 hours to issue a notice of your intent to protest, 10 days to file your actual written protest. So that would be the situation, if something was inappropriate in terms of the process, then that would be, that would be resolved during the bid protest process. Now, in terms of the actual considering the issues, the way it's set up, and this is consistent with every other agency, is there is some deference given to staff, because they really dig into the weeds. So there's deference given by the board to the staff. And so if you change the policy, you're going to be getting into the board sort of overriding the staff deference without, you know, anyway, so that can be a slippery slope. But ultimately, this is the board's decision to decide what they want their policy to be, and, you know, how they want this to work.
Thank you, Attorney Cole, for that clarification.
And Ms. Holly, we don't have to decide this today, but if we progress further, we should all have an agreement, because I just know the last time we had this, I know board members talked to other construction crews, and you wouldn't be able to have that opportunity.
Just clarity, does action mean that if you table it, that I can get my question answered? That's an appropriate action, I don't know where the line is, but now that I've kind of opened a can of worms, so to speak, I still want an answer to my question. I don't have it, and I think that that's something that should definitely be at least acknowledged. It's a $70 million project, and it's paid by sales tax. So I don't know, that's just a question I have.
Well, that will be referred back to Superintendent and your staff to look into that. Mr. Jacquin, I will follow through with that.
Madam Chair, can I hear the question again?
The recommendation?
No, the question from...
Oh, from Mr. Jacquin?
Yes, if you're looking for an answer for.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You said you were looking for an answer to your question.
Well, it makes two points difference, and therefore the award should be for us and not them. It's pretty straightforward. If you could look at Addendum II, it says in there something should be included. It's that simple, and it's not, and it's black and white. And it's an objective thing, it shouldn't be have this ambiguity, it shouldn't, it's not a subjective thing, it should be a math thing, that's all I'm saying, is look at it.
I think the question was, is are they a local contracting company? That's the question.
No, there's two, there's two. The one's about the points taken away from previously awarded work, that's one, that is that, and then the other is the business tax receipt. And if you feel a business tax receipt is an actual company working, I suggest you go down there and ask them to open a door to somebody else's business. Business tax receipt does not mean you operate a business here. This is something apparently they do. I wasn't aware of it, I'm not that way. That's just my opinion on it.
Well, at this point, the board's hands are really tied, Mr. Jacquin, because the recommendation before us is to finalize the award as processed. What we can do, though, is, much like two years ago, when issues were brought forth as to the equity and fairness, is to revisit that in our process with the staff that takes care of it, involved in that. And we can revisit the policy as well, and, you know, have conversation about that. Doesn't necessarily mean that the policy regarding the cone of silence will change, because as Mr. Scott said, that's where we, we are in alignment, and that's where the integrity remains.
No, we appreciate that, I just want to get it right.
Okay, we appreciate that as well.
And that's, and that's, I understand what staff does, but that's why we elected you, is to push back a little bit.
Right, and we will, we will certainly follow through, just as it happened a couple of years ago.
Okay, well, look at what I gave you afterwards, and then you'll see where I'm coming from.
All right. Board members, then, we have a recommendation on the floor for approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Are we still under discussion?
Not till we have our motion on the floor and a second, and then we can discuss. Okay, so do I have a motion to, for the approval of agenda item number 10.3?
I'm sorry, so we're approving this now, and then, then we're going to have a discussion?
You have to have a motion and a second on the floor before you can discuss it.
Okay, okay.
We won't vote until after the discussion, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, so do I have a motion for the approval of item number 10.3?
I'll make a motion to approve it for discussion.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I will open the discussion portion. Mr. Kelly, you mentioned it first.
The correct words were used by Mr. Jacquin, and by the way, Mr. Jacquin, every item I've ever worked with you on over the years, you've always done excellent. This is no reflection on that. The problem is policies and procedures, and this is another problem, when he said "can of worms," that's what you're opening up here, sir, okay? This is going to be the third or fourth time I've mentioned it. We have a policy and procedure that if anything is going to be pulled on this consent agenda, I'm going to know about it, I'm going to be told by the, by the chair or by my superintendent. This is many times that I have not been told, okay? If I had been told this was going to be pulled, I would have asked for the scoring sheets that are attached for review. I didn't think there was going to be a problem, because nobody was pulling it. I didn't get any scoring sheets attached for my review, okay? So for that, that reason alone, never mind anything else that's been done, if there was a motion made to delay this, I probably would go with it, but not because of anything wrong with our other policies and procedures, because of the first one is that I did not get notified. That is a policy and procedure, is that not, Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chair?
I can address that. The policy and the procedure for the board members is that the chair and the superintendent are notified. We do not, according to our policy, pass along.
That's, that's not been, for the last four years, I have not been under that. I've been told, and I, by the superintendent and asking questions, that if anything was going to be pulled, we were going to be notified before. I did not get notified, so I just want to let that go. As far as the other policy and procedures, I wouldn't change anything that we do. What we do is exactly what I've been through in another life many, many times, and it works. I'm not going to get into us overriding our people that make the decisions on this.
May I, Madam Chair?
Can I finish, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm not going to get into that, that's a huge policy and procedure change. You did open up a can of worms with that, sir, so you've heard of my comments about it, that's it. Not having the stuff to review, and not being notified, and telling, and getting those reviews, I'm uncomfortable.
Mr. Kelly, I do want to bring to your attention that all of that review material was available to us through Board Docs. We're able to access all the attachments, because I did spend time going through that as well myself, and I don't know if all the board members are aware of that or not, but you actually have to go into Board Docs. It's not printed out here for us, but you can go into Board Docs and find all of the backup for every agenda.
Madam Chair, I'm acutely aware of that, but when you have 30 items, I'm not going to pull everyone and go through them all, especially, I had a bad week, I didn't have a lot of time for anything.
No, that's understandable.
I'm disappointed.
Right, understandable. Okay, any others wishing to discuss this item? Ms. Richardson?
Ms. Madam Chair?
Dr. Mills?
I am uncomfortable with moving forward with this vote. Based on the questions that Mr. Jacquin has brought up, I hear that according to the books, there's supposed to be an office in a local place for the company that has been approved, and that he has found it not to be. I think we should look into that and, and address the questions before we move forward.
Well, again, Dr. Mills, that's what that 72 hours afterward it's awarded is to be for, for the awardee or the non-awardees to come forth and file, you know, a complaint, a inquisition?
A protest?
A protest, exactly. And that didn't happen.
Why are you not saying that?
Well, but then again, that's, that's, we don't have that, we don't have that knowledge to know, and we have to move forward with the information that we do have.
Is there a possibility to table this at this point?
Only through the motion of a vote, if this motion fails.
Madam Chair, having heard Mrs. Mills, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Attorney Cole, will you lead us through, when we've been having a discussion on an item, and a motion is withdrawn after the discussion?
You're going to have to get a vote on the motion to withdraw at this point, and if this passes by my majority, then you can withdraw the motion.
Okay, all right. So Mr. Kelly has requested that his motion be withdrawn, before the board to accept or not accept that. All in favor of accepting Mr. Kelly's withdrawal of his motion, please say aye.
Aye. Okay, we had, okay, never mind, it's okay.
Did you vote, Ms. Richardson?
So we have withdrawn the motion, we just have consensus, okay?
Well, you got, correct. So we're back at square one.
You're back at square one.
Right. So we have item number, I'll see, 10.3 before us. The recommendation is to award the bid that was arrived at through the staff following the policies and procedures that this board has put into effect. Do we have further, another motion to come before us?
Were you going to make a motion to move this up?
We're going to the vote now.
We don't even have a motion to vote on right now, we have nothing right now for item 10.3.
Yeah, you know, I make a motion to, to move forward with the vote. I mean, you've taken the, the motion that's been taken out of the...
Right, so we have to have a motion to move forward. What are you saying you'd like your motion to be?
My motion would be to table this item at this time.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. This is a very slippery slope, and I want to know, are we making sure that the process was followed? Because if the process was followed, then the vote should be the vote.
I just want to let it know that my dissension on this, and making a second to Mrs., Dr. Mills, is not because of the policy with our staff, it is the policy up here, I was not notified. So I would like to go and get the, and read everything that I was told I had already before I make a decision. That's, that's the reason I'm not supporting it.
So we're tabling it so that we can look at the material, and then does that mean we're in the cone of silence then, according to our policy?
Yes.
I hope this is addressed at the next board meeting, the next workshop.
I'd like the questions to be addressed and looked into more fully, and we can continue our policy at this time.
That's, that's not, by tabling it, that's not what we're doing, though, we're questioning our policy.
Well, I'm staying with my table, my motion.
So...
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, can I ask a question? The gentleman mentioned that he had filed a notice of protest, can, has that happened? Within 72 hours, was there, because what I would not want to see is two procedures going on, a bid protest and also this being considered by the board?
May I? So I, according to our staff, our professional staff, no protest was filed by any of the firms that bid. That is the information that I have, I can only speak to what I'm, I'm told by my staff. And Ms. Holly, if, if I may, I wanted to address Mr. Kelly's with regards to the norms, but maybe we can talk about that after this.
I think we've got to deal with the motion on the table right now. So we have a motion to table consent agenda item number 10.3. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, ma'am, I made a second.
You've got the second, all right. Any conversation about that, tabling it? Well, as...
So when we table it, we're going to look at the paperwork, and then we're coming back here for this discussion again?
To table it means, yes, we would have to bring it back for action at a later date. Exactly, I am...
But we are tabling this to look at the paperwork, not to change the policies?
Not necessarily, no, not necessarily, no. We, I have two concerns as a board member. Number one is the message that we are sending our staff, that we don't trust that they followed the process, and I think that's huge. I, for one, do trust that they followed the process. We have been down this road before, and were assured that we would put procedures in place, put policy in place that would prevent this from happening. I have to support the superintendent and his staff on this. The other component is, this is really a very time-sensitive item on our agenda. We're experiencing unprecedented growth, and to stop the process, and really to not even have substance about the item to come back before us, it alarms me precedent-wise, as well as just the move forward motion of this particular project that would be coming on board, so that's, that's my two big concerns.
Ma'am, if I could, I'm just going to reiterate what you said, I have complete confidence in our staff, and that the policy was followed, I'll say it again, it isn't because of that, it's because the policy and procedure that I feel is in place up here wasn't followed, and I didn't expect that to be pulled, I wasn't told, okay? I had a rough week, you all know that, I haven't been around this week much. I would have pulled that anyways, I would have found that, I was not told. That is the reason that I am supporting Dr. Mills's motion. I trust the staff completely, and as she said, this policy should not change. It's not about changing that policy, this is about review, that's all it is.
That's a separate action item, though, Mr. Kelly, to protest an action item for another action item, I think we're getting blurry here.
Madam Chair, I believe that we need, we need more information. I think that we are comfortable with moving forward based on what has been brought up, and that we need more information from our staff in regards to the process, because I, too, the code of not discussing it, we should be able to discuss it with our staff, and that has not happened yet. So that's why I want to table it, just so I have a clear understanding. So, that's why I wanna table it, just so I have a clear understanding of things.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just to go on what Dr. Mills says is, we didn't have any time to discuss it with staff because he couldn't discuss it. And that's my whole premise of this conversation is, if we could've had this discussion seven days ago, we could've worked this out and they could've came with an answer. But you show up to a meeting and they have questions about a $70 million project and we're having this debacle going on. If we would've been able to talk to them seven days ago, we would've had an answer and it would've been handled. But right now, this is why we're having this discussion, to be honest with you.
Troy, you're just reiterating what I said. You're saying the same thing. If I had known about this, I would've checked it and I would've had a discussion with somebody. But I didn't, okay? So, I have no problem with the policy or the staff. I have complete confidence in them. It's for when to follow that policy, follow the one up here too. And this is the, at least four or five times that I have not been notified something was gonna be pulled. John, complete confidence in you and the staff. Nothing to do with that.
I think, Madam Chair, that the, 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 there's like several different issues part, going on here. And one of the things is the policy. If we are going to change anything, um, it would seem to me like the policy would have, is one of the things that's, that's going to need to change. Because if we have the chance to speak to, that's policy. We don't have it because the policy says we can't. So, if we have it, so the policy's going to have to change in order to accommodate, uh, some of the things that we're talking about here. So, it's not just, um, tabling it for this, it's tabling it for a lot of other stuff, which leads to that slippery slope. So, it's, it's really something that needs a bit thought out and really thought about before we start changing stuff.
Yeah, well, it, it would have to go through the entire policy process, which is why it's there.
Neola, which, which we went through for the last couple of years, however long, we went through Neola and we, everything was, 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 you know, written down, all the policies were changed. And now we're, we're, we're right back there at Neola.
But, but we can discuss this with the staff. That's, that's not the, the, that, right. We can discuss it up under the policy with the staff and that's not what I have gotten out of this. So, I'm just uncomfortable.
That is correct, although we always have the opportunity as board members to discuss any item on the agenda with the staff. I think Mr. Ingersoll is the only one that opted for that with this.
I think the staff should come to us and make sure we're clear on where they're coming from, like they do with other things. But that's, I'm sticking with my motion to, to table.
Okay.
We can go for our vote at this time.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All.
Can we have a date certain to the next meeting? Do we have a date certain when you're gonna postpone this still?
That would have to be part of the motion, if you want to amend your motion to that.
Next meeting?
I don't, I don't believe that we should wait all the way until the next board meeting, regular board meeting. If we could meet before that time.
At the workshop.
I would definitely say that's what I would want to do. I wouldn't wanna hold up a lot of time, but enough time that we, we can be clearer as a board on what's going on here.
So, you're saying, um, date certain of September 24th, which is the, the board workshop?
Yeah, we could do that, yeah.
All right, so.
I, I'll second the revised motion.
Okay.
I'll second the revised motion.
So, the motion before us is to table agenda item number 10.3 until September 24th. During that two-week period, board members that wish to investigate this a little deeper, we'll need to do that.
I think we all need, I think we have several of us that wanna investigate a little bit.
Right, so, okay. Everybody clear on the motion?
I, I do have a question. Now, this information that's sitting right next to me, does that get dispersed or not? Cause the cone of silence?
The cone of silence is verbal. As, as, is that, Mr. Cole, I, I think you need to.
Yeah. Well, that's an interesting question. It's your policy. So, I think if you want, if I, if I look at the language, it says it stays in effect until, let's see the exact words.
Until we vote.
Until, right, until you act.
Act.
Till the board acts, well, so are you acting by deferring it? I could argue that you are, but it's your policy. So, if you wanna waive a particular provision of your own policy, you can do that.
I don't wanna do that.
I'm not trying, I don't wanna talk to any of the companies that bid it.
Well, I would not suggest, if you do anything, I would have the board decide and make a motion to consider the materials. But I think it's a slippery slope. If you get materials from one side, then you need to get materials from the other side. And next thing you know, you're in an investigation. So, it's probably safer to go back to the materials that you already have, that staff has.
Correct, okay.
But we also have information here that, 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 that was given to us, that's probably in that manual.
But that's what Mr. Cole is saying, that breaks the code of silence.
I would refer, I would go back to staff. Firstly, I would suggest you go back to staff, ask them questions, that's the questions that were raised tonight, and, and have staff respond to the superintendent. And the superintendent inform the board of the staff's response.
And I would also remind everyone that we are in sunshine, so we can't go in. We need to make appointments one at a time to talk with staff on, on your particular questions about it. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion? And Madam Secretary, I'm gonna ask you to call a roll on this one, please. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Well, he's, he's gonna, she's gonna call the roll on it.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Kelly, you go ahead.
Yeah, aye, yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes.
No. So, the motion carries for one. And it will be, um, brought back then in two weeks. Dr. Mills, we will move to your agenda item at this point, number 14.1.
Mrs. Hawley, may I?
Yes.
Just, I'd like to, uh, withdraw 14.1. Simply because I wasn't notified that we were going to be pulling, or, or, um, I wasn't notified. And I just want a clarification in our norms. It just, I think there's a, there's a misunderstanding, or maybe my misunderstanding with regards to how I read our norms. The norms as it states is that if a board member is going to pull an item, to let the board chair and the superintendent know in 24 hours or the day prior. And the reason for that is so we have staff here to answer questions that are pertinent. I don't have staff members that are here with regards to ALPI tonight. So, I would ask that we table that until the workshop. Okay, I, I, I'm, but, but I, I would like to withdraw it. It's, you know, I, I have to have an opportunity, if there are questions, to have appropriate staff that can answer the questions at, at the public meeting. And also that staff is able to prepare for any questions that come up. And to your point, Mr. Kelly, my understanding of the norms, and maybe Mr. Jen had a different understanding of the norms, and maybe there's the disconnect there, is that, that when we, um, created the norms in July, it's not in the norms that the superintendent notified the board of an item that is going to be pulled. It's so that the superintendent and the chair know an item is to be pulled, so that I can have appropriate staff at the meeting to answer any pertinent questions. And as part of that also, we request that any questions be put in writing so that we can be prepared in a public meeting to answer those questions for the public. So, I get back to why the norms are so important. And, and I definitely, Dr. Mills, I wanna hear what you have.
I have no questions. I want, I wanna make that clear on pulling this item. I have no questions at all.
Okay.
So, you have, I think you need to hear why I wanna pull the item.
But, that's a valid point that the superintendent brings up because neither one of us were aware of that.
I talked with the attorney and be, based on y'all need to let me say why I pulled it.
Well, I, I think we, I hear that.
Because it's not something that you need to be aware of. It's not, it's not anything complicated.
I.
So, let me, let me go ahead and discuss. We can discuss it after you hear why I pulled it.
We're gonna break our policy on one item, but not on the other?
No, that's not the point. The point is, let me say why I pulled the item. It does not, it's, this doesn't apply to really letting anyone else know about it. That's what I'm trying to say, though, you guys. So, for you and the superintendent who is questioning this now, that's uncalled for as far as why I'm pulling it. I'm learning why, because it's not, no big, the reason why I'm pulling the item.
Before you say, though, I just want it clear that this, both of them, right, there's, there's a lot of gray area here because if, if our procedure is to either let the superintendent or the chair know if an item's gonna be pulled, whether it's for a significant reason or not a significant reason, that's, we're not following our, our own policy at that point. Um, so, I, it's not going to impact, I don't think, ALPI if we prolong, we can bring this one back in two weeks as well.
I think these are two different issues. I'm not, I don't have a problem with someone not coming to me personally before the item was pulled. I know that we have policy in that, uh, that we, or procedure that we put in place. But I think it's complicating things now when, when you find out my reasoning why, it really has, it shouldn't matter. I talked with the attorney and really, it was last minute that I made the decision based on speaking with the attorney. So, that's how this unfolded as far as this item.
If I could ask some clarification, I think you can accomplish what you want to accomplish without pulling the item.
That's what, that was the conversation we had earlier.
Right, we, we talked about what to do, but I don't think it's necessary in order to pull the item to announce.
Okay, just wait on discussion and say.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right, so that's what we'll do then. I won't pull the item.
Okay, so we then have one agenda item that has still not been voted on, and that is number 14.1. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation for item a second?
Second.
We are ready for discussion, Dr. Mills.
Okay. My reasoning for, uh, initiatively thinking I needed to pull the item is because I serve on the ALPI's board. And I want to make sure that I am not in conflict with ethics. That simple is that. And I think that we, as a board, need to keep that in mind because we all serve on many boards. And we need to make sure that if we serve on a board and it has to do with exchange of money or, you know, favor or whatever, we need to make sure, I don't hear us do that, I don't think, often enough. But I want to make sure that we move forward in that. Because even myself, there's been times on the agenda, on boards that I've served on, that I have not, um, refrained, thinking it was okay. But now I have the, more of the knowledge through our attorney that we really do need to, any boards we serve on refrain from the vote. So, I'm just basically refraining from the vote.
And I, I think that's a disclosure form, which is required by law, that we sign, that. My understanding is, if you receive any compensation from that, then you are required to recuse yourself from the vote. If you serve on a board, a community board such as ALPI, but you do not receive any compensation for that, then you are able to vote for the item. You have to disclose that you're a member of that board and state that you are not receiving compensation from that board. And you can still vote.
Attorney, we need you.
Yeah, yeah, so this is not a compensated board?
No, not at all.
That's fine, then, then you've made your disclosure and you do the form, and I think you're fine. And then going forward, you just need to, as you've done, you just declare that as opposed to actually having to pull the item for separate consideration. You can just disclose it.
Okay, so, so I can still vote on the item, just disclose.
If you're not being compensated, yeah, I did realize that.
See, and I didn't get that, so now I'm, I'm hearing that.
You're just disclosing that you're on the board.
So, I disclosed it.
Right.
But I'm gonna vote.
Exactly. Just reminder that you'll have to get with Ms. Lincoln and fill out that form within five days of this meeting to disclose it.
That works for me.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I could, going along with policy, I, I hear what you're saying, sir. But if you're on a board, if I'm on a Boys and Girls Club or any board and I'm not getting compensated, I still, as my opinion, and I've been doing this for many years, like you folks have, and you gotta follow it, okay? You still, if you feel that the optics are not right or you feel that it's just not right that you should vote on it, that's still your decision, whether you're compensated or not, ma'am. And that, that should be mentioned, sir, but.
Well, that's a good point. If you believe there's a conflict, then that is the one ground that you can abstain from. That's right, if there's conflict. So, there could be other circumstances, but in this particular case, that's what we're talking about.
I applaud you for pulling it, pull, I applaud you for pulling it for that reason.
Okay, are we, any other discussion? Or are we ready for the vote on item 14.1? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, board members, we will now move to, just to note that, um, our informational reports are included as usual for the charter schools. And Mr. Superintendent, we will move to your report now.
All right, a couple of things. Uh, you will get an invite on Monday. Uh, we are presenting, staff is presenting to the city of Port St. Lucie just kind of an update, uh, at, I believe, about 9:00 AM. But the board, you're welcome, we'd love to have you there. Uh, and that is gonna be on Monday of next week, September 16th. We also, just a reminder, our executive session is gonna be immediately following our next, uh, board workshop. And that is gonna be from 11:00 to 12:00, or at least that's the plan. It may go a little longer if we have some, as lively a discussion as we had this evening. We have an annual college fair for St. Lucie Public Schools, High School students, September 25th at the Fenn Center from 6:00 to 8:00. And I'd also like to congratulate, we have a new AP who was promoted from teaching and learning at St. Lucie Westcade. It's, uh, Magda Aguelas. Magda, please stand, so you can be. I also wanted to apologize, we initially had placed on the board agenda the, our strategic plan. And I, uh, it's great because when you find something that was in your drafts from two months ago, I had sent, or I intended to send the board a final version of the strategic plan with some intents to, like a timeline, and that never got sent out. And then the wrong strategic plan, or the one-sheeter for the website was published instead of the entire plan, which is 40 pages long. So, I withdrew that and I will be resubmitting that to the board in October. So, as, uh, if you have any questions, clarifications prior to the board workshop, if you would like to see, if there's anything omitted, you'd like to see added, we would love your input. And, uh, I apologize for any miscommunication there. We had a great start to the school year. Our students are currently taking the progress monitoring one. That is the first assessment. They take three big assessments, the progress monitoring one, then the two in December, January, and then they take the third one at the end of the year. And our high school students, including Meredith Prince at Centennial High, is, uh, taking that this week. I also, we've got another round of football on Thursday and Friday. Encourage all of the folks out there, please attend our games and support our kids. August primaries are over. We'll have a new board in November. Teresa Aronson is gonna be taking, Mr. Kelly, your many years of public service, I wanted to thank you and I'm, I'm sure I'll have plenty of time to thank you. But Ms. Aronson's gonna be taking over and I wanna congratulate Mrs. Richardson for another four years on the board. Congratulations as well. I look forward to working with, with, with our board members. Congratulations as well. I look forward to working with our board members. I also wanted to remind everybody that vote by mail, November ballots are being mailed out as we speak and that starts in September. Whenever you don't vote, you lose your opportunity. Voting, along with public education, is the genius of our democracy. So if you don't vote, you lose your voice. So please get out and vote. So with that being said, that concludes my remarks and I hope everybody has a great week.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Attorney, any report from you tonight?
No report.
Thank you. Moving on to our school board member reports, before we get into the actual report section, we do have one more action item to come before us. I am to travel for the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards meeting on September 25th through 27th. That is the opportunity that we will be setting our legislative platform for that entire region. And it does go over the $500 requirement that I need to bring it before the board for any comment from the public, first of all. If there are any in the public that wish to address this, seeing none, board members, I would ask for a motion to approve my travel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
A discussion.
Discussion?
I just want to thank you for going and representing us. I've had to do that before and I don't appreciate it. And I just want to say thank you so much that you're a great representative for us. And I know it's a distance and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Appreciate that. Any other discussion? Okay, now we can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Board members and I pledge to represent you well. We will move then to our board member reports and, Mr. Kelly, we're going to begin with you tonight.
Well, the first thing I want to say is I congratulate you on the way you've handled everything tonight. I only have one more formal meeting left and I want to tell you that which, the way you handled everything tonight, your demeanor, although I may not have agreed with you, you have the best demeanor I have worked with dozens of elected officials. And I wish I had, I wish I had half of your demeanor. I couldn't have handled it the way you did. Mrs., Dr. Mills, you, or likewise, you, your demeanor was great. You, not so much.
Come on, man.
But I congratulate, you have my deepest respect. And as far as the policy, again, I'm going to say it again. My vote had nothing to do with the policy that we have. I hope that policy never changes. I do have one thing I want to discuss. I, my thing, I've been on, I don't know how many years I have on different boards. Fireboard, TPO, 16 years, my city council. And the main thing with me has always been consistency. We got to be consistent, okay? And the last four years been here, most of the time, it's been consistent, but it has not. Remember the debacle with, you can't make a motion, Mr. Kelly, at the workshop? And in the next meeting, people were making motions. We're going to make a motion on this probably at the next workshop. So not very consistent, let it go. There's been a few other items too. But there's one tonight, sir, that I'd like to address with our attorney here. By the way, you did a great job, as I said before, with what you said. However, on all these years that I've had, if I make a motion, as I did, for discussion, I'm making a motion for discussion, and then there's a discussion and I say, I want to pull my motion to the chairman. I don't need a vote from everybody else on any other board I ever was on. You said we had to vote to let me re-pull my motion. I don't agree with that, sir. You may be right. Tell me I'm wrong. I don't know.
And the Roberts rules provide that once a motion has been made and seconded and announced by the chair, then it requires a majority vote for the motion to be withdrawn. And it's the most common misnomer in Roberts rules, but if you look at, you'll find that.
I stand corrected then, sir. I believe you. Never in the 40 years all at all on all the boards, anytime a motion was withdrawn for discussion, have we had, that board had to draw on it. So now we know that that's a policy.
And just so you know, sir, I looked it up because, because you are absolutely right, happens all the time.
Jack, you should hire good attorneys.
Just, so we're going to have consistency on that one, I think, okay? Other than that, once again, I applaud you on your demeanor tonight and thank you for everything. I love the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Richardson, board report?
I wasn't expecting to recall that soon. So I am very honored. I just want to say thank you to everybody that went out and voted August 20th. I'm very honored to have been re-elected to serve on the St. Lucie County School Board. The victory, this victory, is a testament to your steadfast support and I am grateful beyond measure. I am committed to continue serving our community to ensure that our children and educators are attending a safe and secure learning environment. Moreover, I will be very intentional about prioritizing efforts to help our students read on grade level. I am incredibly blessed to have the support of my family throughout this campaign. And this is very, very important. Family is very, very important. My daughter's unwavering support, wisdom and encouragement were the bedrock of my campaign. She wasn't just my sounding board and I told her I was going to say this because it is so important that we give family, we give, we, our relationship with our family is our, is the core of who we are. And I told her I was going to make sure that she gets all the kudos and so I'm giving it to her tonight. My daughter's unwavering support, wisdom and encouragement were the bedrock of my campaign. She wasn't just my sounding board. She was my guiding light, offering invaluable insights and steadfast resolve when I needed it most. I'm sorry. I want to thank my son for his dedication and for his, he was my, my son who is my voice of reason. Together, my son Beth, my daughter Bethany, I'm sorry, I'm just so nervous right now. My daughter Bethany and Philip exemplify the power of family support. I'm deeply thankful to my children and the unique ways that they stood by me and with me during this journey. I would also like to thank my dedicated campaign staff and incredible volunteers. Their tireless efforts and belief in my vision for our schools have been very humbling. Truly, this group of people embodies the saying, behind every successful person is a strong support system. Thank you again, St. Lucie County, for standing with me. I look forward to building on our progress and delivering meaningful results for our schools and families. We did it. We did it. And together, our voice will inspire change. The same changes that we were talking about here on the board tonight. Things are not always the way it is supposed to be or the way we think it's supposed to be. Change is necessary. When we change, things happen. So this, we need change on the board. So this, our voices, we will together, as a board, as a team, inspire change. We will inspire our superintendent. We will encourage our superintendent to make this, this district the best district, what you say, a destination district. That's what we are working towards, being that team that will work together to make this, to realize his dream and to become the best school district in the state of Florida. So I just want to say thank you to St. Lucie County for re-electing me for another four years so that together we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. I do want to thank the superintendent for a great start of the school year, along with everybody, the staff and principals that are here tonight. And I just have something for Ms. Vickers. I have the notice that was put on my vehicle for parking on the first day of school. Was that Miss Hammond that got me? Okay, I just want you to know, I was tagged. Yes, ma'am, thank you. I thought you were going to write me up. I seriously did and I got written up. I just want you to know.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Dr. Mills?
I want to congratulate Ms. Richardson again for her reelection. We all know how hard campaigns can be and you did it and we congratulate and admire you for it. No report other than that.
There is no other business to come before us this evening. We are adjourned.